When I was on the school board, we were trying to pass a school and we were trying to plan this, the high school.
Yeah.
Where I would literally have three meetings in one night. And I would be going from room to room to room.
Oh, wow.
And like three nights a week as we tried to pass all the different.
Well, yeah. When you're in the middle of passing a budget and building a new building, oh my god, that's so much work.
I know. So one or two nights a week is like.
Piece of cake.
You're like, oh, that's it.
That's not a piece of cake.
All right, we are on. Okay, good evening, everyone, and good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the November 30th school board meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are a little light this evening as far as members. Derek Barker will not be here, he's working, and Janine, I believe, will not be here either. So that leaves three of us. The important ones.
I would agree with that. Tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Glad to be included in that.
Do we have any revisions?
I do not know, Mr. Chair.
Summary of non-public actions from November 16, 2016. Ms. LaFleur made a motion to approve non-public of November 2, 2016, Mrs. Bickie, second. Her motion carried 4-0-0. We have no presentations or recognitions, so we'll render correspondence. Derek is not here, but I don't believe, outside of several from the Budget Committee requesting information, that there was anything else, and all the information was sent to the Budget Committee.
I don't recall anything either.
So with that, then we'll go to approval of draft minutes, public session, November 16, 2016.
What does this have to do, right? Motion to approve the draft minutes from November 16, 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Next week.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 3-0-0. To them, bring us to community forum. Zoe?
Zoe, anything?
That's enough. So bring us to superintendent comments.
I just want to, again, express the pride that the community and the school district feels for the band and the accomplishments of the band and the fact that they're going to be going out to Hawaii. And I had a quick chance to talk to a few people. Some of the ceremonies are going to be seeing there are just extremely unique. It's a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and I certainly want to express my sincere appreciation to all of the people that made it possible. And I want to also wish everybody the best, enjoy yourself, and learn a lot. Thank you.
Now bring us to school board comments. Well, I'd actually like to talk about, I don't think it fits in as far as school board comments. For those of you out in the audience who may know or may not know, the Litchfield Support Service has formed a union, and we have been in negotiations with them for the last two months. I believe it's been like two months. We came to an impasse, we had a mediator come in, and from there, we continued to be at an impasse, and it is now going to what's called a fact finder. Where it's basically a mediator or that type of person who will then look at both sides and formulate a decision or his idea of where the two sides are and where they can be and present then to us his recommendation. So I'd just like to give a little highlights of how far apart we were. Because now that it's been discussed and we've gone to the mediator, we can discuss publicly some of the things they were looking for. I'll start off by saying their first presentation to us between salaries and benefits was a $2 million increase. And again, we're talking 110, 120 employees. Of that, I believe about $400,000 was salaries alone. They were looking for additional, they were looking for all employees working 30 hours to receive insurance, where right now it's all employees working over 35 hours receive insurance. They were looking for additional longevity, they were looking for additional holiday pay, they were looking for, I don't think some of the officials add everyone down. Another one they were looking for is, for those of you, is equalized pay. So basically, they just want to receive bi-weekly paychecks regardless if they're working on the end of the year, then they would like balance things out. They want to add life insurance to all employees, part-time and full-time. And a couple of things that they want to make sure that was in there was that we cannot outsource any type of work. And this came up sometime, I think, last year, that we had a discussion as a board that we want to look into possibly outsourcing and hooking on with the town for groundskeeping, where we thought we could save the town some money, especially by going on the same company that has the town, just to do lawn mowing and that type of thing. And the union is dead set against that, and we were not looking to reduce workforce, but to simply save the town money and then utilize that workforce to a better ability. And the last thing, and I'll mention it because it's been a thorn as far as the board, once we realized this was happening, and we tried to stop it this year, but everything had to stay status quo with the union, that they offer, and it's in their request as far as the CBA, they give free lunch to the monitors, the lunch employees, and the janitorial staff that we wanted to put a stop to at the beginning of this year, once we found out this was happening. And unfortunately, everything stays status quo, so we can't. So it remains that way. And this board felt strongly, once we found this out, that it was happening, that it's not fair. I mean, this is taxpayer money that's going, the free lunches to people that should be paying for lunches. So these are just some of the things that are in their request. They've come down, obviously, from their initial $2 million, but it's still a fire cry from where it needs to be, where it's affordable. So, once the fact finder gets back to us, or once we realize who the fact finder is, then we'll have a better idea of what the proposal will be for the CBA. So, that's all I have. And Tina, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, because you were part of the negotiating team with me, so.
Mm-hmm. I just, I regret that we weren't able to come to an agreement and that we need to go into fact finding. I think we were pretty close, and I think our final proposal was reasonable and took into account what the taxpayers could afford and what the taxpayers would approve on the ballot in March. And it's just a hard balance between what we would like to be able to pay everybody and give everybody its benefits and what is realistic.
There was one other item I just remembered, I should have remembered, because it's a big one. I think anyone out here who buys them. I think anyone in the public who has insurance realizes that the cost of insurance keeps skyrocketing. Anytime you pick up a newspaper or anytime, on a yearly basis, you have to renew your insurance, you realize that insurance costs continue to escalate. And the employee and the employer has to pay a fair share. And right now, in the world, the employee is paying more and more. The insurance for this bargaining group went up last year 9 percent, didn't affect them as far as, except for their share, they had to pay 9 percent more for their share. This year went up nine and a half percent. And again, they're paying, they're still at the same portion and percentage-wise, but with a little increase. And part of what we looked for in negotiations was looking to balance that a little bit, just a little bit, where they paid a little bit more of their portion for an excellence insurance package. And unfortunately, again with that, there just wasn't much give. So hopefully, with the fact finder comes back, and we can present a reasonable offer to them, but not $2 million. So, that's it. Now, on to business and finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first presentation, if you will, of the draft of the default budget. I provide you with a quick snapshot overview of some of the adjustments. As you know, the default budget is basically a computation of the current year budget, which in this case would be 2016, 2017, adjustments for contractual obligations, as well as the reduction of one-time appropriations. So again, the two of the largest areas, not surprisingly, will come in the development of the default budget, in the area of salaries and benefits. And as you've heard on numerous occasions, the benefit, I'll take the benefit first, the health insurance, we would have to adjust in the default budget for the 9.5 percent employee contribution increase. Two other areas, one has a greater impact than the other, is the New Hampshire retirement system has gone up, again, on the employee contribution increase. Those two increases alone account for over $330,000 increase to the default budget. Those are requirements that we will be obligated to pay, whether or not it's in the regular budget that's being presented to the Budget Committee or in the default budget as well. I won't go through all the others. Some of them are smaller changes, but again, most of them are contractual. You can see in the salary, there's a reduction of, for two areas, one was in the area of severance buyouts, which is a one-time contractual, so the differential, if we have any severance buyouts, was a reduction of $56,463 and some grade changes, there was a reduction there of $8,600. The other big area of increase in the default budget was also, the board in past years has recognized the commitment to the IT five-year plan as a contractual obligation to the district, so we also put that, the net increase in the default budget of $54,579. One-time appropriations, on at the bottom, account for a reduction of $175,000. That would be in the area of furniture and equipment, that is outside of the tech plan for reduction. On page two of the handout, just gives you a quick summary of where the default budget, first draft of the default budget is, it is $165,769,000 increase over current year appropriation for the general fund of Fund X, if you will. In the school board, the third line down recommended for Fund X, which is our main fund, from what the school board recommended to the Budget Committee to what the default budget would be, as you can see, there's a difference of $565,000 or a 2.7 percent difference between what is being recommended for 2018 by the school board to what the default budget would be. And this is the first pass-through, if you will, timeline. We still have time, and, Mr. Chair, if you wish, we can bring this back next board meeting with the full board for discussion.
At least we have a pretty good idea right now where it stands as far as variance from our suggested budget.
I would say the only area that, Mr. Pelletier and I have had a conversation this afternoon regarding, there's approximately $16,280 that we could add to the default that I asked Jason if he could give some information on that, and we can bring that back to the next board meeting. That basically has to do with the increase of our bandwidth for the internet and the new telephone system. My question to that would be, are those contractual obligations that are in place now that aren't included in the 2017 budget that we would need to accommodate in the default budget for 2018? So again, Mr. Chair, if it's the wish of the board, I certainly can bring this back next meeting if there are any questions. In the meantime, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
I think my, I guess my concern is, and I'm glad I have Cindy in the audience, because I'll ask her, because our next meeting is not until December 21st.
Right.
And when final voting will be for the school?
22nd.
22nd. I realize, I mean, that you want the default budget. I guess you at least know what the number is, roughly what it is. Would that be too late as far as to get by the 21st? Or you wouldn't have it until, obviously, the 22nd for your final voting, so.
Right. I think as long as we had it by the 22nd.
Okay.
We have a tentative night set aside at the beginning of January, and that would be drug dead.
Yeah. But at least right now, you know what the number is.
Yeah.
I mean, right, as of today, and it's not going to change, obviously, much from that. So it's like 500, what's the amount? 560?
The $20 million, 568, 691. And again, I'd be more than happy to share the documentation. You can send that over to Ms. Kucher.
Yeah, it'd just be a draft.
So you have the draft, so you know what the numbers look like. And again, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions from the Budget Committee relative to how we.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we sent them as a draft, at least, and they'll.
Yep, we can get that up. And again, be more than happy to answer questions. There is time, obviously, between now and December of the meeting, so I'd be more than happy to do that.
I'd like to, I'd just like to, with the budget chair person here, on page one, under special services, out-of-district tuition, second bullet, FY '18 out-of-district tuition not funded, not included during budget development of plus 106. That is due to a new student that we just received over the last week or so, and where we're including the actuals for the current year, we will be requesting that we add $106,000 to the special ed budget, because that would be an actual, just so you know where that's coming from. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
The other item, bullet item one, the business report chair is, and to the committee, Michelle was kind enough to put together some of the, a draft, if you will, of a template of proposed warrant articles. And you can see, we, and I say we loaded it up with a template of, you know, the capital reserve transfers, all the past considerations of the board, the, obviously, the first two would be the budget and then the CBA, if that is to go to warrant for voter approval. Again, we have the security warrant in there as well, and the positions, as recommended by the superintendent, are in there as warrants. So again, we do not need a vote on this this evening. This is first draft to the board, and again, we'd be happy to answer any questions about how some of the numbers came about. But again, it's draft to be voted on by the board, so we can move that along to the Budget Committee for their vote on the recommendation of the warrants as well. And I'm assuming the timeline of that would also work along with the default.
So Frank, I see that Article II, between Little School District and Little Education Association, would that include both CBAs?
No, they'd have to be listed separate warrant articles.
But it's not in here, right?
Right, I, that was my fault. But it will be.
Yeah.
So it is now the.
There would be two separate warrant articles for the individual CBAs.
Will that be a three-year?
Two.
A two?
Well, we don't know.
Well, we'll just put, again, the template together.
Yeah.
So if, in fact, we need to bring it forward.
The last proposal was that it was a two-year.
Okay. But you don't know what's going to come back.
Right, right.
I'll take care of that in the morning.
So again, this is first draft to be discussed, and obviously, in the next meeting, we'll have a better sense from the board.
We will take off the Budget Committee's vote, that's already on here.
Thanks for recommending that.
Like I said, my assistant.
Trying to save some time.
Just came back from vacation, okay?
It wasn't unanimous.
There were no assumptions made, it was simply a cut-and-paste error. My apologies to the Budget Committee.
Hence draft.
We could make it unanimous, but.
We knew that you would approve those.
Again, Mr. Chair, we'll bring those back for the next meeting.
Yeah. And Article VI is the same as last year, is correct? And same as Article VII?
Well, it's correct as recommended by the board.
Yep.
Which changed that delivered.
And same as VII.
Tell me about Article IX. Have we always had five members? Or it's never been more than five? Huh.
No. And I think going from five to seven, especially in situations like we have this year, we're dealing with two different collective bargains.
It's been a busy year.
Yeah, and you're also looking at next year, if they both pass, then fantastic. If not, then you'd be looking at doing CBAs again for two unions and looking for superintendent search. It is quite a bit of work. Still don't have any questions this time? Yep. And do you have anything as far as bus counts you want to discuss, Frank, right now?
Sure. I did provide you with an abbreviated September through current bus count that was requested by the school board for us to complete. Again, I need to shout out to Michelle for really assisting and being diligent to get the information from the bus company, because it was a bit of a struggle. As you can see, there were some zeros in there relative to the count for, I believe, bus number two. But you'll see by the counts, and what we were able to do is look at the differential between the AM average for the buses, we did break out the AM and PM transportation number count for the buses. And again, as you can see, not unexpected, the counts do drop in some buses considerably, especially at the high school, where we have some buses that are rolling out of the property here at three, four students. So it's something that we certainly are going to monitor throughout the year, and I will provide you at the intervals, so you can take a look at bus one at LMS. As you can see, the counts up there are very high, but if you look at the route itself, there might be something that we can do there, but not during the school year. I'm certain that, you know, over the summer, we can look at some of these routes and based on the data that we're getting, but it's in an area that the other buses, you know, we might be able to trade off some areas. But again, I think the data, as we collect throughout the year, will give us some good indication of what we can do with some of these routes and maybe consolidate.
I may be biased, because I live on Bus Route One. But I thought that we had talked about possibly, after we got the bus counts in, making changes to that route. Lightening the load for LMS students especially.
We can, but I think we need to get a little more data, and I think you'll find, and certainly, maybe if we collect another month, we can ask the bus company to take a look at, you know, can we alleviate some of the count for bus one with other areas? And when you look at the routes, and Michelle, again, we kind of have a nice overlay, and we can look at these, the old-fashioned way, we take a colored marker and we mark the bus routes, and in this day and age of computerized bus routes, we still do it the old-fashioned way. But it really does give you a look, and some of these buses are really all over the place.
Yeah.
And sometimes you resolve one on ridership, for instance, on bus one, but, and you may be able to alleviate some of the problem area there, but you can also create another problem with distance.
I know, and I do appreciate that.
But I think if we get it, I think we can certainly look at it if it becomes critical to do it during the school year, but I think the data that we're collecting will be very helpful over the summer months to really look at some of these routes. They haven't been looked at, quite honestly, in years. They've been pretty oil of plate, and they maybe just change, based on the location of some of the students, but for the most part, the stops have pretty much remained the same. The reason my four years here.
I would like to look at that a little sooner than later. I do think it's critical. I think 60 kids on, 60 middle schoolers on a bus with backpacks and gear and instruments is tight.
I can certainly make that recommendation to the bus company, and we have the data, is can you take a look at alleviating some of that issue? And it has been ongoing, it was in place last year.
Yeah.
We were, it was brought to our attention of concern, but we really didn't have the data. Now we do. We have it, and I don't think we'll see much of a drop-off. You do in a high school, again, for obvious reasons, the kids get their own cars and some things happen, but the middle school, the numbers, we can certainly ask them, and I'll report back to you.
Thank you, Frank.
I think it's going to be helpful, too, if we continue getting regular bus counts from them.
Yep.
It was Tina, you just mentioned as far as, you know, all the kids getting on here with backpacks.
Yeah.
I watched my daughter leave from the middle school, so it's not just your backpack. If you're playing a sport, it's like two backpacks.
Right.
Then if you play an instrument, it's a backpack and an instrument. So it's, I understand, you know, the bus can hold X amount of students, but it's all the rest of the gear, you know?
Forty-pound backpacks.
Yep.
Like I said, I mean, she leaves with a bag that's bigger than her backpack for sports.
Jogging down jackets, yeah, exactly. My daughter's instrument is the size of a fifth grader, so.
I think that's the input we need, because the bus company's response all along, in previous positions I've had, has always been, well, it's seat 77.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're loading on little astronauts, look like they're ready to blast off to the moon with backpacks and so on and so forth. That input is important to us, because again, we can go and look at the load of what really should be reasonable for that bus, and just first blush of the data and the input we're getting, it's unreasonable to have that number of students on there. But again, now it's trying to configure it and get those other buses maybe to alleviate some of that.
Good.
We'll certainly do that, and we'll make that request to the bus company.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you. And committee reports, Budget Committee?
We're trucking along. I'm trying to think if it's good with anything. Sorry. I don't think there was anything major. I mean, we had a few discussions about some questions that were answered, but, you know, input from the community, nothing.
And this week, you're reviewing?
This week, we are reviewing.
Grounds.
Buildings and grounds, food services, and CHS.
Yep.
And voting on, I'll be sitting in.
I know.
Curriculum.
And then voting on curriculum.
Salaries and benefits.
Salaries, benefits, and HR.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Cindy.
Now, I've been watching the meetings, and I mean, from the last one, it didn't seem to be.
No, it went pretty smooth. There was nothing, nothing major to report out, anyway.
All right. Bring us to all our unfinished, unfinished business policies, which we've seen these a few times. The first one is IIAE.
Didn't we?
Good evening.
A vote to accept the, didn't we do the first reading last night?
Not yet.
So you're just approving.
I read it like six times.
At least.
All right. But this is, nothing has changed from the last time?
No.
Okay. So then I move to approve the first reading of policy IIAE, the Digital Technology and Electronic Media Acceptable Use Policy.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. 3-0-0.
Thank you.
Our second read on the two concussions, the first one, JL CJ.
Is this the second reading for that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to accept the second reading of policy JL CJA, concussions and head injuries, no, JL CJ.
Right.
Sorry. For school athletics.
Is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Forget I'm the only one. I'm the only one that can do it, sorry.
You don't have to, but.
No, I do second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. And the next policy, which we've seen several times, JL CJA. I think a couple of these will be brought back, because not everyone.
JL CJA. I think a couple of these will be brought back, because not everyone's here from the board. But again, not everyone's here from the board. Again, and I think rather than seeing these again, where I think the board has already, as a whole, has already
We've already discussed it.
Discussed this.
All right. Well, I guess I'll move to approve policy JL CJA, concussions and head injuries.
Second.
For any student.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Three zero zero. Which will then bring us to the manifest.
Well, thanks.
Any questions on the manifest? Again, we knew this meeting this evening would be a short meeting. And I say it to the audience who's out there. We had to reschedule our meeting due to a bargaining meeting that'll take place on our scheduled time. And I didn't want to go a length of time without the public having an opportunity to come in and either talk about something they wanted to or come in just for public input. So rather than going a longer period of time without a meeting, I didn't want to just not have a meeting and go four weeks. So I wanted to give the opportunity. And again, our next meeting will be on the twenty-first of December. Which will bring us to public input. And with no public in the audience, then we will just go right into non-public session. RSA ninety-one dash A colon three one one. Dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee for disbanding of such employee or the investigation of any changes, I'm sorry, any charges against him unless the employee affected him, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, a request that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person or a public employee, I'm sorry, as a public employee, see matters which have discussed in public would likely adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the ABC itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And now we're non-public.